Good evening, everyone. The time is now 7:30 p.m., and I'd like to call to order the September 27, 2023, Library Board, Downers Grove Library Board Trustees Meeting to Order. If you could please stand forward, pledge allegiance. We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous people who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Caitlin, can you proceed?
Yes. Trustee Dougherty will not be in attendance this evening. Trustee Humphreys?
Here.
Trustee Kuntia?
Here.
Trustee Neenber?
Here.
Trustee Slaydak?
Here.
President Gagani?
Here. All right. Item number four of the agenda is the approval of minutes, the August 23, 2023 Regular Meeting.
Just a reminder that we are taking advantage of a transcription service, so the minutes are a summary, not verbatim minutes. If you would like to access the full content of the board meeting, please go to our website at dglibrary.org/board. How you doing members?
Do we have a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Do we have any comments or questions? All right, if not, we can approve, we can proceed to roll call. I mean, I'm sorry, with voice vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and all those abstaining.
Abstained.
The minutes have been approved as presented. Item number five is financial matters. Item eight, August 2023 Financial Report, and item B, September 2023 Invoices.
Okay, so as far as our financial report, we are doing just great. As of August 31, the library is 66% of the way through the fiscal year. You have two revenue reports in front of you this evening, half of the press, as of 6 p.m., thanks to Caitlin. You have a corrective report from July and the August report. The old July report that was in the last board packet had an incorrect amount from property taxes. So the copy in front of you has the correct amount, the amount of $58,974.50. The August report, as far as we know, is correct, and as of August 31, we have collected 62% of our annual revenue. As far as our expenditures are concerned, we are right on track, being 66% of the year. We have spent 63% of our operating fund. I'd like to call your attention to a couple of some outliers in our overall expenditures. We have the professional services line. That's at 73%. The professional services includes our program presenters, includes our consultants like Rethinking Libraries, who helped us with our strategic plan, and oddball administrative expenses like the transcription services that we are currently using. The special legal line, line 5323, continues to be well over budget at 500%. This is primarily due to a third-party investigation, which has now concluded. It also includes legal counsel responses to some of our order requests that we received. It might, it probably doesn't hurt to mention that line 5450, cleaning services, will continue to increase and exceed the annual budget amount as a result of higher maintenance cleaning company. And the other equipment line, line 5470, this is for our building services. So this includes things like HVAC, elevator, automatic doors, plumbing, et cetera. And the village wants us to code anything related to building services to this line, even if we go well over budget. So that's as far as our overall expenditures are concerned. As the invoices are concerned, we have two invoices from the capital replacement fund, one from Fitzgerald, one from Trane. Fitzgerald, they were the company that were responsible for doing the disconnect and connect of our electricity and data during our desk replacement projects. And Trane, in the amount of $14,000, that is for our VAV box replacements that we are currently going through, all of those in the library. We've, to date, done 15 out of 82, I believe, and we have six in the queue, and we're working on the area of the building that was constructed in 1997. Okay, as far as our operating fund, two invoices that I will highlight for everybody is the amount in, is the amount of $23,905 for the Hardland Cabinet Supply Company. That was for the replacement desks in IT, circulation, and adult services. And the $3,000 for United States Postal Service, that's for our postage. I hope I covered everything.
And the VAV replacement, that was on the long-term table, so that was kind of nonsensical.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, do we have any motion?
I agree, approve the expenditures and they were as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the financials as presented. I'll open the floor for any questions or comments.
We've been talking for, as long as I've been on the board, about the fact that our expenditures are not linear. And this practice of reporting how the percent elapsed time of the year and comparing it to the percent elapsed expenditures is nonsense and meaningless. When are we going to get reporting that tracks against the monthly budget? We've been asking for that for a year and a half.
I cannot answer that question, but I can ask Julie when she returns.
It would be at least the 10th time it's been brought up.
Any other trustee comments or questions? All right, here, let's proceed to roll call.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Neenber?
Yes.
Got off on my schedule here. Trustee Slaydak?
Yes.
President Gagani?
Yes. All right, the financial matters, as presented, have been approved. Item number six is public comments. As a reminder, public comments may be also submitted online at dglibrary.org backslash feedback, or emailed to the Board of Library Trustees at libraryboard@dglibrary.org. Also, at the desk, as you walk in, there was a list of rules for our meetings. I'm going to go over them really briefly. The minutes are a summary of the board's discussions and actions. Therefore, public comments and written materials submitted by the public may not be reflected verbatim in the minutes, so please refer to the videos posted for full public comment content. All public comments are only heard during the public comment agenda item. The public comments should be directed to the Board of Library Trustees, not to any administration sitting here. The Board also requests the members of the public limit their comments to three minutes. The max is five minutes, and we do have a 30-minute total for public comments. We encourage people to limit repetitive comments, and if you are speaking on behalf of the group, we ask that you ask or elect one individual to speak on behalf of the group. And as always, please be respectful, no side or back conversations, no applauseing, applaud, or jeering, or anything of that nature. So with that being said, I'll open the floor.
Thank you. Hi, Eileen Brainer, Downers Grove resident. I come tonight to address the misinformation in the land acknowledgement statement. In your recent revision, you took the line, "The federal government and Catholic Church officials coerced Native families into sending their children to live and attend classes at boarding schools without visitation." You changed it to, "The federal government and officials from Catholic and other Christian churches coerced Native families into sending their children to live and attend classes at boarding schools without visitation." This revision still suggests that Catholic Church was a predominant player in this school program. The library author of this change conveniently deleted Volume 38, Number Two of the Legal Review by the Native American Rights Fund, which shows that 7% of the students were at Catholic schools. A new document was added that shows 14 denominations took part in the schools. This latest document has been updated in August of 2023. The new information is that there were 523 total boarding schools in the United States from 1801 to present. I have documentation by the National Native American Boarding School Healing Coalition that 87 of these schools were Catholic. That's less than 17% of the schools, certainly not the predominance of the schools. For further insight, there are 125 schools still open today that were or are considered Indian boarding schools. How can these schools be so egregious and be open today? Some of the schools have been open to the public at large and are no longer just Indian schools. Harvard University is one of those schools. Would you send your child to Harvard? Certainly not all of these schools were or are bad. This is a complicated history and is oversimplified and biased to an extreme in the land acknowledgement statement. The current statement, as it stands, is disparaging at minimum and libelous at maximum. I ask you to change the statement, the sentence in dispute, to read, "The federal government and Christian churches created boarding schools to carry out the assimilation policies of the United States." Simple request. I hope you agree. Thank you.
I helped organize the painting of the library windows to honor Memorial Day in 2023. At the May and June meetings of the Library Board, I addressed the board concerning the unprofessional behavior of Julie Milovic and Jen Rjuduski, specifically that they lied about the existence of a board policy regarding the painting of the library windows. We were told by Julie and Jen that the Library Board policy required all groups to submit an email requesting permission to paint the windows and explaining what they would paint. We complied with this board policy. Through FOIA requests, we learned that the Pride Organization never submitted emails asking permission to paint the windows in 2022 and in 2023. This double standard should not have come as a surprise since Julie is an unapologetic political advocate for LGBTQ. They receive preferential treatment, but if you want to paint the window to honor the men and women who died fighting for our freedoms, Julie will try to stop you with a policy that doesn't even exist. Censorship, pure and simple. After the June meeting, but before the July Library Board meeting, I submitted an email requesting to paint the library windows in July of 2024 to celebrate the Fourth of July. In response to my request, Julie and Jen explained that there was a new policy for painting the windows. Their email stated the following, "For the foreseeable future, DGPL will allow window painting only as part of community-wide event organized by a community partner organization." In my response to their email, I explained that July 4 is a community-wide event. Downers Grove hosts a July 4 parade down Main Street, and that we also met the second requirement. When I explained that we met both requirements, I asked once again for permission to paint the windows. Julie and Jen did not respond. I also asked them when this new policy was implemented, since this new policy was never voted on at the June meeting, and remember, these email discussions took place before the July meeting. In other words, Julie and Jen got caught in yet another lie. The board never voted on a new window policy, yet Julie and Jen said a new one existed. Realizing they were caught in another blatant lie, they handed me off to the board president. In an email, the board president told me that the board is now at work drawing up a policy regarding the painting of the windows. So realizing they were caught in another lie, they had the board president tell me that the board was working on a policy. Since I have been lied to repeatedly by Julie and Jen, I made a FOIA request for the original board policy that Julie and Jen told me existed in February of 2023. Julie's response was the following, "There are no responsive records to this request." Julie, how about just giving a straightforward answer? Just say, "I lied, and there never was a board policy." But to admit wrongdoing requires humility, maturity, and good character, something that is wanting in the director. The board president, in an email, finally, but begrudgingly, admitted that no board policy ever existed concerning the painting of windows. Finally, the truth was revealed. The policy that Julie and Jen said our group must comply with never existed. The director and assistant director claim they want to model behavior that they would like to see in this community. Julie and Jen have modeled behavior that is reprehensible, narrow-minded, and bigoted. They've been caught in one lie after another, and this board refuses to hold them accountable. I requested that the board president and the other members of this library board censure the director and assistant director for their unprofessional behavior, their unethical behavior, for blatantly lying to residents, their attempts of censorship, and their violation of board policy. In her email response, the board president refused to censure Julie and Jen. Not one board member responded to my emails. Julie and Jen are adults and have been engaged in blatant wrongdoing, yet this board refuses to hold adults accountable, adults who knowingly and willingly engage in wrongdoing. Liberals claim to oppose censorship. However, what Julie, Jen, and their liberal minions of Downers Grove have demonstrated is that you are the best practitioners of censorship. Your attempts to censor our First Amendment rights to paint the windows to commemorate Memorial Day were clumsy and failed to work. Julie and Jen's attempts to stop us from painting the windows to celebrate the Fourth of July are simply pathetic. Your efforts to censor well-celebrated holidays such as Memorial Day and the Fourth of July are disgusting. Again, when will this board hold Julie and Jen responsible? We're talking about two adults. When will you censure them?
I am a Downers Grove resident, and I would like to thank you for providing content that reflects the entire community, including materials that reflect the LGBTQ+ community. Last month at this meeting, a book that is on the library shelves was presented. This book allegedly promotes being gay. As human sexuality is very complex, I wondered what magic power this book had that would turn someone gay. I decided to review it to determine for myself the validity of that assertion. While I found the characters were relatable, the plot seemed formulaic. Of course, it was a teen romance, so it followed the typical storyline of boy meets girl, or in this case, boy meets boy. They hate each other. They're thrown together, they go on a journey together, they fall in love, problems, crisis, crisis averted, all is well. I found no sexually explicit language or profanity, no more so than in any other teen romance novel. The graphic image referred to was a line drawing of two young men sitting together, sharing a moment. In short, I could not find anything that targeted heterosexuals to read it and turn gay. It was also alleged that this book was being marketed by the library. That allegation made me curious about how LGBTQ content was being displayed. At the library, I found that LGBTQ books were located in the Teen Reads section, nowhere near Pat the Bunny. They were interspersed with a vast array of other genres. Nonfiction, LGBTQ+ books were located on the bottom shelf. In all, I estimate about 5% of the books on display were LGBTQ+ related. That number barely reflects the general population of queer people in this country, a number that has increased with each younger generation. According to Gallup Poll research, the increase from about 3.5% in 2012 to presently about 7.1% is due, in large part, to increasing acceptance as well as increasing legal protection. I could find absolutely no documentation from any credible source anywhere that reading a book, being exposed to, or learning about different identities would turn someone gay. In fact, Lambda Legal states that LGBTQ+ resources are necessary not only to help our queer youth see others who are experiencing similar issues, they create a window so others have an understanding. This lends itself to empathy, compassion, and acceptance. I believe that this push to eliminate LGBTQ+ materials at our public library is an effort to eliminate the very presence of queer people. That is not going to happen. Regardless of the language that is used to demonize LGBTQ+ people, those of us who support equality and our loved ones are not now, not ever, going to back down from those who want to erase us. We and the LGBTQ community are here to stay. Again, thank you trustees and staff for continuing to make the Downers Grove Public Library a safe and welcoming space for everyone. As LGBTQ+ allies, we really appreciate you. Thank you.
One question, what was the book you reviewed?
It was called Unconventional Yours, and I actually read it. I am a former English teacher, so I read it carefully.
My name is Noel Manley, and I'm a resident of Darien, Illinois. I was in attendance at last month's Library Board meeting, and was saddened and troubled by an action the board took. Specifically, the vote the board chose to approve unanimously, the exception of Mr. Nyberg, who wasn't here at the time, to add a biased and misleading anti-Catholic and anti-Christian statement to the library's questionable Native land acknowledgement. The initial read is follows, "The federal government and officials from Catholic and other Christian churches coerced Native families into sending their children to live and attend classes at boarding schools without visitation." As a man of Native descent, that's Anishinaabe or Jibway, and as a Catholic, I'm here tonight to challenge this taxpayer-funded anti-Catholic statement. You'll note that the statement follows in a long and sad tradition of anti-Catholic tropes that predate the founding of our nation. Instead of naming names and providing concrete examples, the statement speaks broadly and deceptively of unnamed and unidentified Catholic officials who conspired with the federal government to perpetuate cultural genocide against Native people. This could not be further from the truth. To challenge this nonsense, I have with me a book entitled, "The Dictionary of the Jibway Language." This book, along with its companion, Grammar, was first published in 1850, and interestingly enough, the book was written by an immigrant, a priest, and a Catholic official by the name of Father Frederick Baraga. Now, Father Baraga immigrated to the United States from Slovenia in the 1840s to serve and advocate for Jibway people, and as such was motivated out of love and dedication to the Jibway people to write these seminal works. It's interesting to note that these groundbreaking books were so impactful that they continue to be acknowledged in modern Jibway language texts to this day. So the question I have for this board is, how do you reconcile the charge that Catholic officials participated in cultural genocide of Native people while at the same time authorizing a series of books designed to preserve and protect the Jibway language? Now, there's a link in the anti-Catholic statement that takes you to a webpage from a left-wing National Native Boarding School Healing Coalition. On this webpage is listed a series of Native schools throughout the nation that they have served participating in this cultural genocide. This list includes the school that Minokamis, that is my grandmother, Jenny McCauley, and her four sisters attended, the Haskell Canadian Institute in Lawrence, Kansas. My grandmother attended this institute between 1902 and 1908 and was trained as a spinographer. She used this education to secure a position with the Federal Bureau of Indian Affairs in Washington, DC in 1911. Now, note that this is a woman of color who in 1911, who was granted, who got this job eight years before the Nineteenth Amendment was a pass. And if those of you don't recall, that gave the right to women to vote. And she worked for the bureau until the 1950s. It's also worth noting that her sisters Helen and Alice were trained as teachers in each return to their respective reservations to teach. It should also be noted that these sisters all spoke Jibway when they entered the school, and they all spoke Jibway when they left. In fact, I have a photo here of my aunt Doris, she's the woman in the middle at the bottom, that was taken in 1906 at Haskell. You'll note that the young women in the photograph are wearing Native outfits, and my aunt and the woman sitting next to her are wearing Native outfits with Jibway motifs embroidered into them. So the question I have for this board is, how do you reconcile the charge that Catholic officials participated in cultural genocide when a school identified by your very source did not beat or restrict Jibway language out of my ancestors while at the same time encouraging and conducting Native events? Sadly, we're faced with a politically motivated library who is pushing an anti-Catholic narrative to advance a far-left taxpayer-funded agenda. The statement is intellectually dishonest and follows an established Marxist pattern of applying a broad negative generalization to a group of people designed to little and destroy their standing in the eyes of the community. All you have to do is look at recent history to validate this point. The purchase of political opponents in kulaks in Soviet Russia by Joseph Stalin, Mao's Cultural Revolution, Pol Pot's killing fields, and the Holocaust are all clear examples of where the state, where state-supported bias can lead.
Verifiable.
Pardon me?
Verifiable.
Okay. We will acknowledge that this is, that the library is on stolen land, correct? And I'm going to need a person speaking on stolen land? So if you just give me a few moments, I wrap it up.
If you're able to finish that.
I will wrap it up, thank you. Okay. And to note, this board voted unanimously to support the statement, again, with the exception of Mr. Nyberg. So I respectfully request that this statement either, one, be removed from the acknowledgement So I respectfully request that this statement either one, be removed from the acknowledgement, or two, the acknowledgement provide clear and unambiguous examples the alleged they have committed in these acts.
Good evening. Mary O'Dowd, resident of Darien. Thank you all for your time and service, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Although I am a resident of Darien and usually obtain materials from Indian Prairie Public Library, I have, in the past, borrowed items from Downers Grove Public Library that were not available at my local library. I say "in the past" because I no longer feel comfortable being here at DGPL. I no longer feel welcome here at DGPL, and I certainly do not feel included here at Strange words coming from a woman who has navigated merchant vessels through the Persian Gulf, who worked for years in this little place called the World Trade Center, Tower One, the North Tower, floor 57, who has worked in countries all over the world with people from all over the world, and who has overcome more than her share of life's, shall we say, challenges. So, why would I feel so uncomfortable here at DGPL? Bottom line? I am a proud Catholic. I am a proud Christian. Being a proud Catholic, I do not feel comfortable being around an organization that only last month added a hateful, hurtful, anti-Catholic statement to its Native Land acknowledgment. This outrageous, unsupported smear statement was unanimously approved by all members present, but I don't call any discussion. I do not know the reasons for this unanimous decision. I do not understand why a taxpayer-funded public entity would take such hateful action against Catholics and other Christians whose religion is based on faith, hope, and love, of loving one's neighbor as oneself. But I do know that I will pray. I will pray that each of you look into your own hearts and do the right thing. I will pray that you remove that very hurtful statement from your land acknowledgment. I am going to pray on this rosary. You know, my grandfather used to pray the rosary too, because he was also a proud Catholic. And my grandfather was also a proud Cherokee. Thank you again for allowing me to speak.
Good evening. I'm Laura Hoyt, Downers Grove resident for many years. This library board, this past summer, approved amended bylaws to provide that you will follow the dictates of the American Library Association. I had pleaded with the library board to not do that, to have allegiance to all members of this community, all constituents that are served by the library, because we've been disappointed by the discrimination, by the equity practices, by the alliance with the ALA and what it represents. The American Library Association is a far-left, anti-parent force that aggressively targets children with sexually explicit LGBTQ materials and drag queen story hours in libraries across the country. Now, we are not anti-gay to the previous speaker, I want to make that clear. What we're against is having children in our community, in our public libraries and our school libraries, being indoctrinated and sexualized and gender-influenced. All of these things are harmful, and we want it stopped. But we have some good news. Just this month, Citrus County, Florida, was the first library district in Florida to publicly vote to leave the ALA and say, "We're not going to abide by this," because they had so much opposition from members of the community. They voted to defund ALA membership. Campbell County, Wyoming, library district was the first in America to cut ties with the ALA, and the state Montana library left the ALA, then others had begun leaving as well. This started when in 2021, the library system in Citrus County recognized Gay Pride Month and had LGBTQ propaganda displays everywhere in the library, such as what you see here. Parents and pro-family voices objected to that, and in the next couple of years, including this year, there were no such events, there were no such publications. The residents were outraged when they found out their tax dollars were being used to pay ALA membership dues. So, family advocates issued a call to action, and 30 pro-family residents testified about the American Library Association's depraved, aggressive, anti-family, and anti-Christian agenda that is pushed in libraries across America. The local leftists supported the American Library Association and, of course, called parents radical extremists who are trying to limit freedoms. Nothing could be further from the truth. Parents don't want their children to be exposed to pornographic materials, and that includes teenagers. We don't want drag queen library displays here at all. This is a public library. The board in Citrus County, Florida, voted five to one to cancel the ALA membership dues, and in response, the pro-LGBTQ activists said that they would offer to publicly donate the money needed to pay the ALA dues. But pro-family residents stood up in opposition to that, and the board agreed by vote to remove the ALA dues from the budget and not to accept any donations to cover the dues. See, that was not the point. The point is protecting our children from harm. Anti-family and anti-Christian agendas have no place in this library or in our schools. They harm children in terrible ways that are being censored. The book Irreversible Damage, as we've said in past meetings, will not be purchased by this library, given policy reasons for not doing that, yet there are five copies of Gender Queer, and it's openly displayed in the teen section of the library. We ask you to undo what you've done and to follow the path of Florida and have allegiance to this community, all colors of this community. Stop discriminating against certain people, stop giving preference to certain people, and serve us all. Say goodbye to the American Library Association. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Sosnow, 20-year resident of Downers Grove. Since we're talking a lot about religion tonight, I'm Jewish, and I went to Catholic high school. I always tell people that, and my mom thought I didn't have enough guilt. So here's the story. I share Laura's sense of importance of taking care of our kids, and so I want to share a few facts. These are from The Trevor Project, a nationally recognized nonprofit. Forty-one percent of LGBTQ young people seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year. Fifty-six percent of LGBTQ young people who wanted mental health care in the past year were not able to get it. Transgender and non-binary young people who reported that all of the people they live with respect their pronouns reported lower rates of attempting suicide. Roughly half of transgender and non-binary young people found their school to be gender-affirming, and those who did reported lower rates of attempting suicide. I want to thank the library board for having the courage to provide material that makes my kid feel like they're a member of our community and that they don't need to be ashamed and shuttered and closeted. I want to thank you for having the courage to do that.
Do you have any other comments?
Hi, everyone. So I've never been to one of these meetings before, so it's very interesting to sit again, so I really appreciate it. It's an open forum for discussion. To that end, it seems to me there's a little bit of a lack of institutional control going on here, so I want to call out some of the things that I heard tonight and put them all on one onus that was brought up by Jim earlier. People here say they don't feel comfortable. Whose job is it to make them feel comfortable? The board, right? People are saying that across both sides of the aisle. Clearly, the board's doing something wrong, right? The topic was brought up, questioning the relationship you all have with the ALA. A systemic or structural decision about the library, whether or not you want to be involved. That's a control issue. That goes back to the board. We talked about the financials earlier today, which the only person I asked a question about I noticed was Bill. There were no other questions asked by the board during the questioning period. But you said you're doing great on the financials. You're 66% of the way through the year, but only 63% of revenue is recognized. That's not great, according to my definition of what great would be. 66% would be great. Bill pointed out, you don't do month-to-month tracking. It seems like, again, a lack of institutional control by the people running the board in front of me. Nobody else asked a question about those financials at all. Again, a lack of institutional controls that exists in front of me. Also, it's very peculiar to me that, it was called out at the beginning, that there's a transcription service that's going on right now. I've worked with transcription services at work before. What they do is they transcribe. I speak, and they transcribe the words into writing. The next comment made was that a summary is included in the board meeting minutes, not a transcription. Well, it's no shock to me then that our expenses are 66%, and our revenues are 63%, because we're not even transcribing the words down, right? So we're wasting money on professional services, which is the bucket you would fall into, and that was one of the ones you called out, is being over budget. So it didn't really make a lot of sense, and again, it comes as a shock of a lack of institutional control, which falls upon somebody. I don't know who it is, but maybe it's a people in front of me. So then, there's rogue emails that are flying to someone out here about policies that do or don't exist, and they have to file a FOIA, Freedom of Information Act, even to find out what's going on? Again, a lack of institutional control by somebody. I don't know. All of these lack of controls are astounding to someone who's never been to this meeting before. It's just shocking, time and time again. So I want to ask where the accountability is. You might disagree with what's being said by folks out here, but they're clearly upset, and your job is to make them feel comfortable here. You have a little sweet lady coming up here holding a rosary complaining that she doesn't feel comfortable enough to come borrow your books. It's crazy. So the lack of institutional control goes across a lot of different things we heard tonight, and I really hope that you put the onus on someone. I don't know which one of you it is, but Bill's the only one who asked a question. It's got to be somebody else. Thanks.
Just one moment. Can I just get a quick show of hands if there are any other comments? Okay, so we are at our 30-minute limit. Do I have a motion to extend our public comment time?
Three.
Okay, and then a second? All right, all those in favor of sending public comments, please say aye.
Aye.
All those saying no? End of statement?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and proceed with public comment.
Good evening. My name is Warner Keonken. I'm a resident of Downers Grove, and I've been attending these meetings now for about the past year. During these meetings, there have been comments made regarding races of people, books on the shelves, LGBT, Native Americans, et cetera, et cetera. Tonight, we heard quite a number of these comments. Having been involved with civil rights since the 1960s, because of my age, what I can attest is that there have been many evils committed in our culture against various groups and religions, and I don't think we can deny that. We need to acknowledge it, and we need to work to end this. When we talk about Catholicism, I would like to put it on a broader level. All of the faiths have done a lot of stuff that this country is not very proud of. On July 28, 2022, Pope Francis apologized for the evil of the church personnel who worked in the schools with Native Americans. I thank the library for giving us access to the literature that keeps our history alive so that we don't repeat the patterns of the past. Thank you.
Janet Wayne Hand, Downers Grove resident. I want to thank you for your time, attention, patience, and courage in the comment sections. The tenor and tone of statements made are uncivil attacks, pejorative and personal attacks, are just, to me, not acceptable. The comment about the apology from Pope Francis is already made. Evil things have been done to people throughout history in the name of one organization or another, and if we can't face that history, we can't improve the future. I want to thank you for your discernment in book selection. I have, at the suggestion of a friend of mine, I've read Irreversible Damage. It is not a particularly helpful book. It is more, it is a political book, and it is available. It's not being censored. The fact that you all know by it doesn't mean it's not available. That's the wonderful thing about sharing collections among libraries. I have often had to get books from other libraries that you don't carry. I appreciate the fact that you're using your resources and our tax dollars wisely and not, and having some discernment about what you purchase. I don't think there's a constitutional right to paint windows. That just occurred to me, although everybody should be fair. So that's generally, the purpose of my comment is to thank you all for your time and your dedication.
I'm not sure the gentleman that spoke, but that was actually a question in my mind too at the beginning. If you said a transcription service that you're paying for, then yes, to me, a transcription service is a service that transcribes word for word. But people say, "I am not aware, I don't know if this is a recording that people in the community can then go back and listen to the whole library," which is great. And summary might be good if somebody wants to briefly look at maybe just the speakers and their topic, but when you, when you jump to a summary, there can really be no other way to summarize something than the person's biased view of what they're reading and then summarize it. That's kind of how kids are taught when they write a paper in school, right? You read it, you do your best to summarize maybe fairly, but there's always going to be a bias. So that, I agree, is a little frightening.
Hi, Terry Pavicich, Downers Grove resident. I'm going to just have a short thing to say. Consistency. Consistency is an important part of all of our jobs. It is the mark of an excellent management team. Therefore, my question is, is why is there different rules for different departments within DGPL? Circulation is the backbone of this library, yet they are held under different rules than other departments. They are not allowed to swap their time. They are not able to trade unless they've used all of their vacation and all of their personal time. Is that really the way to manage people? Again, it is harsher than any other department within the library. It is just wrong. This was brought to your attention in May, and as your director said, there were only a few that had a problem with that. Did she even ask the other people in the department? Because if you ask them, they will tell you that it is unacceptable. Because if you ask them, they will tell you that it is unacceptable. And they're afraid to come forward because of their jobs. This is wrong, and many levels, and you have the ability to reinstate their ability to switch and make the department whole again.
Any other comments? All right, this concludes our public comment portion of our meeting. We're going to move on to item number seven, trustee comments.
I have something. I just want to say, I've been on a steep learning curve the last several months since I've been on the board, and have just been reappointed for a full term. I'm looking forward to working with everybody. And I want to thank the community. I don't always agree with everything everybody says. I'm learning. I'm willing to listen, and I am so impressed at the turnout that we get. I talk to my friends who are trustees at our libraries, and, you know, if they have a controversial issue, they might get two people. Thank you for your passion and caring about the library, even when we have disagreements. I think it's a strong, healthy community where we have this kind of turnout, meeting after meeting after meeting, and I hope we can work together better in the future.
Couple things to note. I appreciate, to echo Marty's comments, appreciate everyone coming out. It's especially nice to see our younger generation being involved in this. Unfortunately, I would have loved to communicate this to the younger gentleman here, but for those that are not aware, our revenue is based on tax collection. Tax collection occurs, as you all know, the joy of paying your taxes every, twice a year. The revenue reflected does not reflect the September 1st tax payments, which is why our revenue is low. So that was an excellent question. Again, would have loved for him to hear an answer, but that is the way it goes. And regarding, you know, what people have been hearing about window painting or whatever, the reason and the beauty of the FOIA process is that all of this information is public. Emails to and from patrons, from library administration, from the board, they're public. If you request it, you can see that there's always two sides to the story. Maybe it's somewhere in the middle, but if this is something that you feel strongly about learning more about, I encourage you to seek out that information and not just listen to one part. And then, just on a good note, and I'm glad Alison's here, the kids department's seeing some wonderful renovations to make it very friendly and very user-friendly and empower our youngest readers to really feel like this is their experience. So I applaud you with, you know, a very interdepartmental effort between Ian and Access Services and everyone to really revamp the kids department. And a huge thank you to Downers Grove Public Library Foundation for their upcoming fundraiser. We really appreciate all the support. They do fund our social work interns and our artwork and much, much more. So thank you to the foundation.
I was also going to thank the foundation. And then, you know, just a couple of really quick things. I was looking at the number, the final numbers now for summer reading, and just to see the increase in the people who participated, the number of families who participated, the number of adults who participated, everything was an increase. To see the number of people who are using our library was amazing and wonderful. And I think I mentioned the last meeting that I tried to hang out here a lot more this month and just see the number of people who come in and out and leave happily. So that was wonderful. And then, a really quick shout-out to Cindy Contrier and Lucas McKeever for becoming members of the EDI Board on Rails. I think that's wonderful. That's it. That's all I have.
I've got, I've got a lot. I'm very frustrated, and I'll explain why. The last meeting, I was unable to attend. I had, I was called out of the country for business. I regretted not being here, and I respectfully asked that the discussion on the strategic plan be postponed, because I thought it was important that all board members participate in that strategic plan discussion. My request was denied. The board went forward, and members of this board who know that I have a little bit of a different perspective on many issues, and they did not see fit to value that perspective and wait to have that discussion until I could be part of that, that meeting and that process. I was very frustrated by that, and maybe I don't have the right to be frustrated. It was my conflict that came up that couldn't be avoided, but I'm frustrated. What I do have a right to be frustrated in is the outcome of several matters at that last meeting. And even though it's water under the bridge, and these matters were voted on in haste, in my opinion, and are a matter of record now, I'm still going to say my piece about these issues, and there'll be several more in the months to come. I made, I made a comment two meetings ago and apologized to the public that we weren't addressing some of the concerns that were brought to this board, because we were concerned with budget processes and strategic planning processes, and those have been resolved now. In hindsight, I shouldn't have waited. Should have taken these things out sooner, because now, it's, in some respects, it's too late, although I commit to the people in the community that have these concerns that I'm not going to let these go unaddressed. So I've got a lot to say about some of the stuff that was voted on and passed last meeting. I'll start with the land acknowledgement statement. Several of our, I started to say one of our constituents, but several of our constituents took an issue with the mention of Catholic and other Christian churches' involvement in coercing Native American children to attend boarding schools, and they rightly pointed out that the Catholic Church was singled out and called out by name. Now, this is where I might, might not be as passionate as you'd like, but nobody who's Catholic should be really surprised by being singled out. And so maybe I'm a little numb to it as a Catholic. I'm also quite confident, given what I know about history, that it's historically inaccurate, and I think some of the comments back that up, to infer that Catholic churches were some dominant force in this dynamic. But they're not going to let facts get in the way of the narrative, right? While I share our concern, and I'm happy to enjoy, to join her in protesting this part of the statement, I actually think it's one of the most least problematic issues in that land acknowledgement statement. And again, maybe I'm a little numb to the Catholic part, but of all of the issues with that statement, that did make my top, top two. The opening of the land acknowledgement statement, the one that we have read to us at the start of every board meeting, includes the following invitation. Interesting choice of words. "We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers." While I have an invitation, I invite you to go back and read the minutes from the meeting years ago when this was initially adopted. Some members of this current board were uncomfortable with the use of that term and questioned it, and rightfully so. The use of the word genocide to describe the struggles and battles between Native Americans and settlers applies a modern context, and a horrible one at that, to historical events. It's a really frequently played card these days, and we've all watched as historical figures and monuments and the like have been canceled, one by one. The history of the world is literally defined by one group's conquest over another. It's an inglorious and unfortunate part of the human condition. It's something we can hope to evolve beyond as a human race. But application of the word genocide to the events that were part of our nation's history is completely out of context and is completely inaccurate. The word itself is unnecessarily divisive, like a lot of things that you're going to find if you dig into the policies, the procedures, and the statements in this library. The only possible motive for this, or the rationale for including that word, is to feed the culture of victimhood that has overtaken our society, to be used as emotional blackmail, and to further our nation's fixation on self-flagellation over our history. By the way, as a side note, other than null, you may notice that the Native Americans who consulted and guilted this library, although not all, since the board and the staff selectively listened to only the Native American tribes and representatives who supported their predispositioned direction, have been absent from library board meetings for at least the last year-plus that I've been, I've been on the board. You may have also noticed that we haven't done any significant Native American programming at the library. Apparently, we just checked the virtue signaling box and moved on. As I mentioned, some members of this board, who are sitting on this board today, were uncomfortable with the use of that term during the initial adoption of the land acknowledgement. Unfortunately, they lacked the courage or common sense to correct it at that time. Fast forward to the last meeting, there was an opportunity to course-correct and take this in a new direction, make it more uniting, more healing, more historically accurate. Unfortunately, we chalk up another missed opportunity and another example of the mindset of this board and this library. The updates that were made to that statement were a slap in the face to everyone who has expressed concern over the extremely one-sided account of the conflicts between Native Americans and the settlers. And I, for one, apologize to all of you who are here tonight expressing your concerns. They were not addressed. Taking the existing statement and adding notations to it, biased notations at that, did not address your concerns with any amount necessary. I commit to you now that this will not be the last word on this matter, and I apologize again for not bringing it up earlier. Tax levy. Let's talk about this budget. If you've been following me since I joined this board, you know that fiscal responsibility is one of the things that's of the highest importance to me. I spent eight years on the police pension board, so I'm familiar with the village finances and the state finances, and it is always top of mind for me. It's a challenging, challenging situation. When we discussed the budget at the July meeting, I thought we were all on the same page. We were presented with a very feasible and workable alternative budget that featured no increase to the tax rate. Now, mind you, it was not ideal. I still didn't love it. It was still a 3% increase in the levy amount, but I thought it was a compromise. Even though it was a 3% increase, it was the right thing to do when you consider the inflationary pressure that the village is under, and more importantly, our household is running. Our fellow citizens are facing higher gas, higher food, higher everything. Keeping the flat, the tax rate flat, would have been at least a gesture and a nod to the struggles that most families are facing today. The other plan was a 4.3 levy percent, at the time it was a 5%. In the last meeting, it went down to 4.3 levy increase. The board, for clarity, could have also landed somewhere in between, had there been a thoughtful discussion about priorities and trade-offs. But, as I won't hesitate to point out going forward, this board does not do oversight very well. They went right to the full amount, as presented by the library staff, and passed it unanimously. Now, you're going to get a good spin on this. We like to put a spin on tax-related matters by talking about things like EAV and tax rates and using self-serving statistics like IPLIR percentage analysis to justify their budgets. In this case, all that spin does is serve to hide the objective fact, fact that we are taking more money from the taxpayers of Downers Grove. And by the way, so you can connect the dots, these are the same taxpayers that were disparaged so routinely in the RGW EDI consultant report, just to remind you. So to remove the spin and the interest of transparency, let's talk about what was in this budget as presented in past last meeting, and how it compared to the more measured flat tax rate plan. First, let's talk about the expenditures. That's going to be an easy topic, because they were the exact same in both proposed budgets. That's right. The library's version of budget alternatives is to only adjust the revenue and the contribution to the capital fund and leave all of the expenses the same. To their credit, they said it, planning clear. In the board packet and the budget packet, it says, "It includes all management team budget requests and consulting for initiatives that were in the draft strategic plan," which, by the way, wasn't even passed, but some still made it into the budget, if that gives you some sense of how much the tail lags the dog here. I'm not sure about you, but that's not how my family does budgeting. It's not how my business does budgeting. When we're faced with lower revenue, we cut spending. The budget approach taken by this library is a luxury only afforded to government agencies. In this case, a government entity that gets to write itself a check and leave it to the village to figure out where to make the trade-offs, to avoid passing it straight through to your household, which the village routinely does, to their credit. Let's talk about some of those expenses that are in there. Here's some highlights. A 16% increase in dues and memberships. This includes the ALA to the, sorry, the gentleman left. A 20% increase in seminars and conferences. A 19% increase in recognition programs for the staff. 5% more for advertising and public relations, which ironically is probably needed, given the public relations dumpster fire that we've seen over the last year. You want to put that in real dollars? It's $54,000, so the staff, library staff can travel to conferences while your household is probably skipping summer vacations or cutting back on holiday spending. There's $100,000 for professional services. That's right, you get to continue funding consultants who do find their place on reports that insult the taxpayer and divide the community. There's a 25% increase in special legal. Maybe that should have been more, given the 750% projected overspend we have this year versus our budget that we incur due to FOIA responses to outraged community members and personnel investigations about mistreated employees. The gentleman's comment about lack of control is fat upon. What's not in the budget is any meaningful increase to anything that's going to improve safety and security in the library. The bottom line, a $250,000 increase in the levy. That gets us funding for all of the above, protects the operating reserve, and grows the capital replacement balance by a whopping 40%. The other plan was a more measured growth in the capital plan to a 17% increase, and still protected the operating fund reserve and still protected all of those programs, as misguided as some of them may be. But I'm sure the board told you this was all necessary, because it gives us a factor of safety. In fact, in the minutes, they said, "The board reiterated that the few extra $1,000 will provide some leeway in the event that projections for capital replacements are too conservative and will mitigate major adjustments in the budgeting." But maybe that's right, to this, to their point. This can allow us to continue funding 270% overruns on capital projects, like the one we saw last year. It can let us absorb tens upon tens of thousands of dollars of unplanned legal costs resulting from mismanagement and reckless programming. It can let us continue to pay $80,000 in consulting fees for editing a boilerplate document that serves to divide our community. You know where this is all going to come from, that $250,000? They'll spin it and tell you it's only going to cost a cup of coffee for each household. But as you know, from being a taxpayer, the problem is how many lines in your tax bill are forcing you to buy cups of coffee. The net effect of this is going to be to burden the village, which is already struggling to maintain burgeoning pension costs, pension costs, and at the end of the day, it's going to come out of roads and sidewalks and stormwater and policing and your summer vacation. I'm going to apologize tonight, apparently. I owe you an apology. We ended the discussion in the July meeting, we talked about the track record of revenues coming in slightly higher, expenses coming in slightly lower, and the sentiment was to lean towards being more fiscally conservative and careful stewards of the taxpayer money. I got duped, and the board rubber-stamped that they have done so many times on so many issues, the plan as presented. Now, on to the strategic plan, and I'm going to save most of my comments for this on next month, but let's talk about the process. The 2023 strategic planning process was an in-depth effort involving surveys, focus groups, and workshops. We hired a consulting firm at a substantial cost to facilitate the process. Then, five days before the July meeting, we all received a note from the director informing the board that the management team had taken it upon themselves to edit the strategic plan, which the board had not even seen yet. In fact, two months had gone by between the end of the workshop and any board engagement. Is there a comment?
Question?
Okay. I want to make sure everybody hears me. The management team edited the strategic plan, and a member, a member, I guess, one, of the equity advisory team had worked on combining the strategic plan, which was the product of a lengthy, thorough, and inclusive process, with the equity strategic plan, passed before I joined this board and largely the result of the RGW consulting work. Apparently, the equity advisory team was concerned that the equity strategic plan might become secondary to the strategic plan. So now, the management team and the equity advisory team So now, the management team and the equity advisory team had taken it upon themselves, without any direction of the board, to assume responsibility to modify the plan. I and other board members, which at the time gave me some false hope about oversight, voiced concern. I stated that I didn't feel it was appropriate for the management team and the equity advisory team or anybody else to create or modify the process, not to mention the output of the process itself, without the board's alignment. I said I thought we needed to review the output of RTL's efforts, that's the consulting firm, and set direction on next steps, which can include how to consider merging the equity strategic plan with the construct of the strategic plan. And if you want, since some people are so fond of FOIAing my emails, you can get to see my comments verbatim. Fast forward to last month, when, and apologize in advance for my sarcasm here, in an amazing turn of events, the board met with RTL, merged the equity plan, and without any thought to placing that final product into the public domain, passed our 2023 to 2028 five-year strategic plan. It's an incredible confluence and consensus-building achievement in a matter of a few hours. Not only did they not respect the need to have all the board members involved, they don't care if the public gets to see the final product before they cram a vote through on it. Are you picking up the pattern here? Right, good. Whether it's virtue signaling, land acknowledgement statements that selectively pick input from certain Native Americans who support a narrative, picking and choosing the causes they deem worthy of window painting, getting rid of employees who don't conform, manipulating material selection policies to exclude materials they don't like while simultaneously decrying manufactured book banning efforts, pushing agenda-driven programming and displays, writing themselves checks on your dime, or ramming the last steps of a five-year strategic plan through to a vote, this library thinks it can do whatever it wants. And unfortunately, it enjoys a majority of a board, maybe not everybody, hopefully not everybody, that lets them do it. Don't take my word for it. Go back. Look at the number of dissenting votes on any substantive matter in the years before I was appointed to this board. I stopped looking after three years. Kudos to you if you can find one, a single one. Go back further, maybe there's one in there. I'm frustrated. The only thing I can do is continue to working on these matters and to bring this library into alignment with where I think the majority of the community wants them to go. I read with great interest and amazement the comments that Bob Iger made at the analyst meeting for Disney, talking about the recognition that they need to back out of the culture wars and that their mission was to entertain. But we have a mission too. We have an entire generation that's behind academically, and maybe we need to start, start worrying about that and stop worrying about divisive land acknowledgement statements, rubber stamping budgets, and cramming strategic plans through that drive agendas. I'm frustrated, but I'm committed to working to correct these situations.
Do we have any other testing comments?
So on behalf of library director Julie Milovic, I'd like to first of all acknowledge that trustee Marty Sladek has been reappointed to library trustee for the next three years, I mean six years, so congratulations.
Please bring the item to check out to the self-checks for the first floor service desk at this time.
I will comment.
The library will be closing in 15 minutes. Thank you.
I want to update everybody on the security camera software upgrade and a new device installation. This was completed September 13th. Currently, we have 25 cameras in and around the building. We installed four 360-degree cameras. They are located in the public service area, the teen central area, and the north and south lobbies, which gives us a larger viewing area. The great thing about these cameras is that no matter what you're looking at on the screen, the camera is picking up 360 degrees of observation. So it's not just what you're looking at. Our old cameras didn't have that feature. They would only be recording what you would see on the screen. So if a camera sticks on a certain location, that is all that would be recorded. In addition to the 360-degree recording capabilities, the video retention time has been increased to 45 days as opposed to 40 to 72 hours. As mentioned earlier, the installation of the new service desks have been completed. They wrapped up within three days without much disruption to service at all. As Bill mentioned, our strategic plan was passed last month. This has permitted staff to take the next step and work on a work plan. What that means is that we have been identifying, we have gone through the strategic plan as passed and going through the initiatives identified in the four main areas that we're going to be focusing on, programs and services, access, turning inward and turning outward. We hope to have that work plan presented, ready to be presented at the next board meeting in October. Wanted to mention, ILA is coming up next month. Three of our trustees have currently signed up to attend. There's still time if you want to go last minute. Library director Julie Milovic will be presenting. So will children's outreach coordinator Erin Lindzenmeyer and one of our reference librarians, Mary Sue Starr. They'll be doing a presentation on reader's advisory. Allison and a couple of her colleagues will be doing a presentation on interviewing and job skills. Allison is also on the conference planning committee, so thank you, Allison. I want to remind everyone that the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation is hosting a, oh, we already did that, okay. I want to remind everybody that our Board of Library Trustees, the very first coffee with our trustees is Saturday, October 21st, from 9:30 to 10:30 in our library cafe. So community members are invited to visit and get to know the board and ask questions over coffee and pastry, so please come. Later that evening, the Downers Grove Public Library will be honored at the Youth Outlook Business Partner of the Year Award Gala. The Youth Outlook's mission is to celebrate, empower, advocate for, and provide services to meet the ever-evolving needs of the LGBTQ+ youth and their families, friends, and communities. We've been partners with them since 2020. It is the first and longest-running social service agency in Illinois solely to get dedicated to supporting LGBTQ+ youth. Okay, incident reports. So in August, we had 24 incident reports. We had 11 of those were involving disruptive teens. We had a power outage. We had one call to emergency services for an intoxicated person in our garden area. We had a complaint about somebody letting air out of his tires. We had somebody complaining about somebody leaving food in the cupboard. We had an abusive chat. We had a person fall off a chair. We do use PITS to record every incident that occurs in the library. We do not take any incident lightly in the event that we need to revisit it or have documentation for something occurring here on the premises. So even anything as mild as giving a child a band-aid because of a paper cut, that will be documented in our PITS reports. We are making, you know, tangential to that, we're making slow but steady progress with our transition to incident tracker, which is a new reporting software that we're migrating to. We are the very first library to transition from one incident database to incident tracker. So we ran into some problems uploading our attachments, some of our files, our video, our images. It's taking long. They have to do it manually, so, and they have, just as of yesterday, assigned a second staff person to speed up the process. Finally, I think a lot of people know, we had a Comcast internet outage, which lasted four days here. It resumed yesterday around noon. It went out last Thursday in the afternoon. What happened, according to our IT manager, is that we upgraded some of our services a few years ago. According to Paul, our IT manager, Comcast does repurpose some of that equipment. And when they recommissioned it, they neglected to do a factory reset. So what that means is that the device still had our network info stored on it that was specific to DGPL. I want to reassure everybody that this information did not allow access to our network or library services or anything confidential. It just allowed connection to the internet. So because our current router, as well as the old one, we're both using the same sites. So this is what caused the conflict, which is now resolved. And I think that's all I have.
Item number nine is new business. Item A is rescheduling the October 25th board meeting to October 18th. As a reminder, we need to make this move because we have three trustees attending the Illinois Library Association Conference down in Springfield. That starts Thursday morning, so we would not perform for that meeting. So I know we've talked about it amongst trustees that that is available date, so do we have a motion to approve this meeting date change?
Comment on that?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I will be out of town that day. I will be returning, and my plane lands a little after 7 o'clock at O'Hare. I will get an Uber and come here as quickly as I can if the plane is on, I mean, if the plane is on time. Excuse me. I will do my best to be here, but there's a possibility I will not be here. I hope and assume that there is a forum without me. And I trust the rest of my colleagues on the board to transact this issue.
Dedication. I will make a motion to reschedule the October 25th meeting to October 18th. Right? All right, we have a motion and a second to move the October 25th board meeting to October 18th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed and all those abstaining. All right, the October meeting will be moved to the 25th to the 18th. Item B, feedback on statistical reports.
So earlier this summer, the board library trustees was provided with several examples of different library board leading packets, which included graphs and charts. Trustees gave some feedback on some of those. And overall, the feedback was that the board wanted them to be clear, simple, easy to read, and represent trends over time, and connect to the strategic plan, which we're not, which we can't currently do, but we can devise charts and graphs to connect to the strategic plan as we have into the strategic plan initiatives. In addition, we got feedback that the graphic reports showing department activity would be helpful on an annual basis. So basically, the goal of this conversation is just to review some of the graphs and charts included in the board packet this evening and get some feedback on what you would like to see moving forward, monthly and annually.
Just a question, specifically, which section of the report are we, are we?
Basically, this is...
Discussion 11 and 12 here?
We're primarily talking about the statistics reflecting circulation, room usage, programming, attendance, Wi-Fi usage, gate count. This is, finances are separate.
So that's the last few pages of the packet, which are...
Right.
And have your attention at least, a library will be closing in five minutes. Please bring the items you wish to check out to the self-checks for the first floor service desk at this time. Again, the library will be closing in five minutes. Thank you.
I really liked the Northbrook sample. I don't know why, but it just visually is very easy to read, and that might just be because bar graphs, I just don't always like them. I just, I don't know, something about the way that the Northbrook sample was laid out was very clear to me.
I agree. I think that infographic style is conducive to keeping the public fully informed.
I did find our graphs just a little bit difficult to digest. Like, I felt like especially the line, not so much the bar graphs, the line graphs were just a little bit tricky. But I agree that the Northbrook ones were visually appealing and helpful. I like the ratio of ebooks to, you know, physical books, audio versus e音频, et cetera.
So if I can ask a clarifying question, since everybody's seen, since the board's trying to, so far, like the Northbrook example, are you just looking for statistics year to date, or are you looking for comparison?
I, so it's challenging. I do like both, the comparison of, you know, at least two years prior. Granted, we're in a really tough time since we're still coming out of COVID, but I do like to see the trend, and obviously, there's, you know, fluctuations on month based on, you know, school year and stuff. So I feel like month-to-month as well as a three-year previous.
I think it's got to have some comparative basis, or I think it goes kind of meaningless.
Yeah, that's the only thing about the North. I like their graphics a lot, but they don't have that year comparison.
Right.
But I think what we're saying is we like the style of the Northbrook, not the exact...
Yeah, the ease of reading, it's very user-friendly.
Okay.
The Northbrook, though, just to clarify, does not appear to have any financial data that would be important.
Yes.
The visual presentation.
I'll just echo that, the Northbrook to be informative. I guess I'm used to the old one and learned how to read and interpret them over the years, but I think the Northbrook one is probably a lot easier for newer board members and not more, so that's great.
So would you like the year-to-year comparison every month? Do you want it quarterly? Do you want it annually?
I'm sorry, the what?
Do you want the three-year comparison or the year-to-year comparison? Do you want that to appear every month? Do you want that quarterly? Do you want it annually?
I would say minimum quarterly.
I would think quarterly would be enough. There's a lot of staff time involved.
Right, that's why I was trying to get a feeling of what...
I would, if it can't be done monthly, I understand why. It seems like you set up these databases, the data's in there, and as the monthly data rolls in, spits out the results.
Okay, I just was asking.
Quarterly would be fine.
I think that I agree with Bill that if it's, it should be, it should automatically be able to process it. Once it's set up, we should be able to do it, right? I don't know, I'm...
I think it's design aspect, that it might take staff some time to figure out the design aspects, because the numbers are very easy for us to get. That happens automatically, but the amount of time that marketing patients need to do, they have to figure out their process, so...
So maybe we would wait till that is able to be figured out, because it would take a while for this to come out, which you'd have to do this.
She would have to, they would have to, I don't know, talk to somebody.
I'd have to go back and get more information.
Sure.
This is not my area of expertise, so...
If it's...
The numbers are easiest. It's the pretty stuff.
Try a quarter, if that turns out to not be enough, then...
I'll be on record, quarters not enough. I think most of these software packages that generate those, and I've gotten some experience with some of them, there's some setup time for sharing front-end. Once they're set up, it's replicatable as frequently as the data's updated.
I would prefer to see them month-to-month, too.
I think because there are...
I'd rather we have too much data too soon, and if it looks like that's not digestible or it's not useful, we can always cut it back.
The library will not close. The library will open tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. Have a good evening.
Better.
Yep. Especially since, like, I feel like January, December, January, they're kind of standalone and factory holidays, and then there's a kind of this month to the summer, so month-to-month, I feel.
Thank you for researching.
I think what I'll do is I will investigate how long it will take for setup and to get exactly what we want, and we might start the new year off with these graphics. exactly what we want, and we might start the new year off with these graphics. I don't know how quickly we'll be able to get it done, but it'll be something that we're looking at.
All right. That's all of that, thanks. Thank you. Item 10 is unfinished business, of which we do not have any. And then item 11, I had requested be added on the agenda in the event that we had any follow-up regarding personal investigation. So as of now, we don't have anything to follow up on, so there is no need for an executive session.
I have a question about the executive session from last month. Am I able to access the recording of that as a board member, or the fact that I wasn't there and I precluded from seeing that?
I don't think that goes on that. Dad, I don't know either. I have to, I have to get back to you.
We'll, we can, I don't know. We should have some access to.
I seem to recall from my training that, or I don't, but if you...
Never offhand either.
All right, well?
One, just procedural question. What's the process for adding items to new business?
Emailation, myself, or just Julie?
Is there a process to have it added, or is it anything, the email gets added?
Is there, because he was asking for some process to get any, an item or the agenda added.
Oh, okay, there's no official process, just you can send an email.
Usually, let's see, the goal is to get the board packet out the Friday before, so probably that, you know, several days before at the earliest. All right, well, the time is 9:02, and I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting.